Good evening, all. Good evening. I would like to call to order the joint meeting of the Kattati City Council and the successor agency to the former Kattati Community Redevelopment Agency for Tuesday, March 14th. May we -- do we have a roll call, please? Councilmember Skilman?
Here.
Councilmember Deloso?
Here.
Mayor Harvey?
Here.
Vice Mayor Landman?
Here.
Councilmember Moore?
Here.
Okay. Will you all please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
(Inaudible) United States of America, and to your brother, the which stands one nation, and God, indivisible, ever created in justice for all.
(Inaudible) Mayor, would you speak for the side?
Mr. Berich, there will be an opportunity for you to do so on item number 14, public comment on non-action items. But thank you. We have the approval of the minutes and notice of waiving of readings of all resolutions and ordinances introduced and/or adopted under this agenda. I'd move to approve. I have a motion in second. All in favor? Aye.
(Inaudible).
Okay. So, we have four approved and one abstained. So, we will move on to the announcements. The City of Kattati has special open office hours on Monday evenings from 5:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. by appointment in the Community Development Department at City Hall as part of the Kattati Open for Business Program. This program provides personalized assistance and information to developers, current Kattati business owners, and those interested in starting a new business within the city. The Rona Park Kattati Regional Library hosts events for all ages, including art exhibits, book clubs, and children's programs. All events are free and open to the public. For more information, call the library at (584) 9121 or visit www.sonoma library dot org. The Kattati Historical Museum is open regularly, the second Tuesday of each month, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m., Saturdays from 1:00 to 4:00, and by appointment. For more information, call (707) 794-0305. And in addition to that, the Kattati Historical Society will be hosting its ninth annual Old Fashioned Chicken Barbecue on Sunday, April 9th, from 2:00 to 4:00, right across the way in the Kattati Room. There are advance tickets and tickets at the door. Citizens interested in receiving City of Kattati community alerts via text or email are encouraged to sign up at nixle.com, N-I-X-L-E. The city offers a variety of recreational programs for all ages. See details on the web at kattatcity.org. And lastly, come have Coffee with a Cop on Wednesday, March 22nd, from 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 a.m., sponsored by Starbucks and Kattati on 640 East Kattati Avenue. Come for a cup of coffee and casual conversation. Coffee with a Cop is a great way to meet your Kattati police officers. So, with that, I will move on to proclamations for this evening. We have one proclamation. Would you like to come to the podium? So, proclamation of the City Council of the City of Kattati in recognition of National Surveyors Week. Whereas surveying has been an essential element in the development of the human environment since the beginning of recorded history, and it is a requirement in the planning and execution of nearly every form of construction, with its most familiar modern uses in the field of transport building and construction, communications, mapping, and the definition of legal boundaries for land ownership. And whereas, in order to accomplish their objectives, surveyors use elements of engineering, physics, mathematics, astronomy, law, and history. And whereas, since the colonial days of the United States, surveyors have been leaders in the community, statesmen, influential citizens, and shapers of cultural standards. Former notable surveyors include George Washington, Thomas Jefferson, Abraham Lincoln, Lewis and Clark, Daniel Boone, and Henry David Thoreau, among many others. Whereas many services are now provided through the use of sophisticated surveying equipment and techniques, including satellite-born remote sensing devices and automated positioning, measuring, recording, and plotting equipment. And whereas, the establishment of the week of March 19th through March 25th, 2017, as National Surveyors Week, is a fitting tribute to all surveyors. Now, therefore, be it resolved on this 14th day of March, 2017, the City Council of the City of Kattati proclaims the week of March 19th through March 25th as National Surveyors Week. So, with that, would you like a photo opportunity? Would you like to speak first?
Well, I'd just love to thank the City of Kattati for recognizing National Surveyors Week. Sonoma County actually has a rich history of surveying. It started with California's first surveyor, Jasper O'Farrell, who was responsible for laying out the city of Sonoma, as well as San Francisco, many of the ranchos. He actually acquired much of his wealth surveying throughout California. So, we are very happy to work in his legacy and really preserve both the public and private interests with the diligence of our measurements. So, thank you for recognizing National Surveyors Week.
Okay. I do have one very small little question.
Yeah.
Since you're a surveyor, and you know all about it, help me with the astronomy part of it.
The astronomy part has largely fallen out of use, especially with global positioning, because previously, in order to get true bearings, you had to take astronomical readings to find true north versus magnetic north. And so, the map bearings, depending upon your location and the variance of gravity, the magnetic reading could be, you know, 10 to 18 degrees from what the true astronomical north is. And so, throughout history, older deeds on the east coast are all magnetic bearings. But by the time we got over here in the west, we like to keep things true north.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody comment? Okay, great. We'll do a follow-up. Thank you for teaching me something today.
(Inaudible).
So, we will move next on to the approval of the final agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda?
No changes, Mayor.
No changes? Okay. Then, we will move on to citizens' business and public comment on the consent calendar. Any member of the public wishing to speak to the council on any items listed on the consent calendar, or any matter not listed on the agenda that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council may do so at this time. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the council is not allowed to consider issues or take action on any item not listed on the agenda during this period. Pursuant to City Council policy 2016-1, comments of any member of the public are normally restricted to a total of three minutes in length per person for matters not on the agenda, and a total of three minutes per person in length for any and all items on the consent calendar. The mayor may extend the time for a reasonable time where disability accommodation has been requested. And so, with that, any citizens' business?
Last meeting was ridiculous. Instead of spending your time examining financial problems I had analyzed for you, you obviously spent time figuring out how to discredit my financial analysis. Because you have spent the time more wisely by actually delving deeply into what my math was stating about the financial stability of the city. It was based on facts and figures out of the budgeted books. Could you have directed the staff to fill out the League of California Cities Municipal Financial Health tool that I have sent you repeatedly, that would have given an unbiased assessment of the city's health, financial health? Could you have voted on consulting a municipal financial health expert? Yes, is the answer to all these questions. But you knew I wasn't coming because it was my birthday, so you put your efforts into discrediting me where I couldn't be here to defend my financial analysis. You had the say, all the say on what it was. But this is how you work. You'd rather spend your time trashing and discrediting the citizens rather than make sound decisions. You are experts in every aspect of running the city and don't need to consult anyone else, right? In my advocacy and leadership class last week, I learned from the most valued characteristic of leadership is honesty. It has to do with integrity. How honest have you been about your actions, conflicts of interest, the city's finances, and your behind-the-scenes deals? All that I can say is that I have more integrity in my little finger than all of you have put together.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else? Yes, George?
Thank you, Mayor, for the benefit of the audience and the people at home watching tonight. My name is George Berich. I'm a former city councilman here in Kattati. And what we have here tonight, I want to welcome everybody to the Communist Central Committee of Kattati Regular Meeting, which meets about twice a month, because that's about what it's come down to now. This is where fascism and bullying have become a fine art on this council. If you're in the audience and you happen to shake your head in disagreement, you might hear one of the city councilmen's lash out by saying, "Please control yourself, Mr. Berich." That is fascism. Pure and simple. This is a city hall where the government always has to have the last word. It's a place where privacy for the homeless, who live on the streets in Kattati, are demanded by people like Ms. Skilman, but my civil rights are violated with some kind of joy by the council as well. This is a town where city councils utters "one nation under God" during the pledge, yet none of you will publicly admit you even believe in God. That's the kind of irony we have here at City Hall. It's a place where city council members get recalled for doing their job and for making good on campaign promises. It's a place where city budgets balance by playing fast and loose with the numbers, and you pass bond measures to replace aging and dangerous buildings in this town. It's a town where the town drunk can get appointed to the city council and will do and say anything to become mayor. It's a city where Mr. Deloso may reprimand you out here in the audience during a recess, but won't reprimand you on the record. It's a town where new police officers come through the front door and get introduced here at the podium when they are hired, and they are ushered -- can I get your attention, Ms. Skilman?
Absolutely.
Please, thank you. And they are ushered out the back door when they are fired without any word. It's where the local left-leaning newspapers have only praise and adulation for City Hall, for higher taxes, and for group think. It's where companies like Oliver's Market are told that if you don't like our small-town, small roundabouts, these small traffic roundabouts, you may not be a good fit for the town of Kattati. I want to welcome everyone here tonight.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else wishing to speak on citizens' business? Okay. I do have two speaker cards for the consent calendar. So, Carlos Campos, I believe you'd like to speak on item 10A?
Yes. My name is Carlos Campos. I am not a resident of Kattati. I'm actually a resident of Kenwood, so that's unincorporated part of Sonoma County. But I am here because of two things. Number one, I'm a safety and health professional, and I am a cancer patient. And the reason I am here is to urge you guys to please accept, again, Mercy Wellness as a fine shining example in this city of what could be. I have been to many facilities in my line of work, and I can tell you that what I have seen in Mercy impresses me. And when I go there in order to receive my meds, I feel much better. And I can tell you, I'm standing here before you today, getting ready to receive treatment number 12 of chemotherapy next week, and I'm beating my cancer because of the help that I am getting from people like the folks at Mercy Wellness. So, I'm here to urge you to please accept that and let that continue to go forward because it is a huge benefit to this community and areas around the area that are not necessarily living here, but do rely on this particular dispensary for their meds. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. I also have a speaker card from Michelle Ramsland.
Good evening. I'm Michelle Ramsland. I live in unincorporated Sonoma County. I just wanted to encourage you to go ahead and allow Mercy Wellness to have a business license again for this coming year. I am a migraine sufferer. There are days when I can go 14 days straight with a migraine. I've gone to the point with Big Pharma meds that I've gotten to the point where I was almost overdosing. When I go to Mercy Wellness, I can get the medicine that I need, and I don't have to have Big Pharma medicine. The medicine that I get there can help me function and actually become a productive person at work. I don't have to shelter myself in a dark room. So, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else wishing to speak either on citizens' business or on the consent calendar? Okay, seeing none, I will close public comment. We will move on to direction on future agenda items. Okay. Then, we will move on to the consent calendar.
I'd like to move to consent calendar.
I would second. Okay. I have a motion and two seconds, but we'll let you choose one. All in favor?
Aye.
Let that show that that was unanimous. And we will move on to the regular agenda. And the first item that we have is Safe Parking Program status update. I believe we have a representative from Catholic Charities?
Yes, yeah, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So, the Safe Parking Program, as you will recall, on October 15th, 2016, the city entered into a MOU with Catholic Charities to administer the program. And it's a timely, it's a timely point in time to just discuss how it's going and where it's going. And we do have a lady from Catholic Charities here tonight, Jenny Lynn Holmes, who will give you a more detailed update. Thanks.
Thank you, and welcome.
Hello. All right. Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. I'm Jenny Lynn Holmes, Director of Shelter and Housing for Catholic Charities. I also have with me Jennifer Lake, who is currently managing our Safe Parking Program right now, for us to answer any questions. Just to first tell you all that we're very grateful for the opportunity to expand the program here. It's been kind of unprecedented for a community like yours to get so involved and to get actually greenlight it so efficiently and as quickly as you did. A lot of kudos to Damian, who did a great job working with us and had some very positive conversations. So, we've been operating the program for a few months now, and we have seen on the upwards of about 45 people go through the program in total. We got off to a little bit of a difficult start. One of the first evenings, we had a couple of individuals that were sleeping there. There was a miscommunication with CHP. CHP came in, thought they weren't supposed to be there, moved them along, kind of some just inter jurisdiction communication errors. Unfortunately, that led to a little bit of difficulty with regaining the trust of people in the program. The population, people who are experiencing homelessness have high trust issues, as you can imagine. And so, we've been working to kind of rebuild the reputation of that here in the site. We deployed our street outreach teams here to Kattati to, again, start reaching out to individuals who are experiencing homelessness to rebuild that trust. As of last night, we had five vehicles here with nine people sleeping in those different vehicles. And we've been able to start spreading the word a lot more. And again, a lot of it's going to be word of mouth, but by the people themselves. For those that would love a little history of safe parking, our Safe Parking Program comes, it has been going on for about four years now. It started in the county, taking it on and using it at the fairgrounds when we had an extreme cold snap. And based on the initial success of the program, they decided to continue it, but it wouldn't be able to stay at the fairgrounds, obvious reasons, a fair comes. And we also wanted to move to a scattered-site approach. We felt the scattered-site approach would be better because it would allow us to spread the care for people in the communities they live in and where they might have their support network. So, it wasn't necessarily efficient for us to take somebody who's experiencing homelessness in Petaluma and have them come to Santa Rosa, when maybe their whole support system, their, you know, children's school, all of that might be, you know, in Petaluma. So, that's why we wanted to create parking lots across the county that allow us to do this. So, we currently have, as a park program overall, about 10 sites with over 110 safe parking spots across the county. Yours is the most recent one, so we're excited about that addition. We also have a couple of other ones that are currently in the works for hopefully the next month or two to come on board. The program is funded by the county of Sonoma, and last quarter alone, we were able to take 27 households who were living in their vehicles and move them into permanent housing. And really, that's the end goal of this program. Safe parking, although it provides a safe spot for a person in the moment, it doesn't resolve their homelessness. And so, our goal is to use it as an opportunity to engage people into a longer-term intervention and get them from their vehicles into housing. Our shelters are all heavily impacted. Catholic charity shelters alone, we have waiting lists in the upwards of 200 people waiting to get into emergency shelter. And so, this is really gives us an opportunity to keep them engaged and sometimes even divert them from having to come into shelter. Additionally, safe parking has been great for those that maybe emergency shelter isn't a good fit. For example, people with animals and/or maybe mental health issues. It's harder for them to live in a larger communal environment, and so, this allows them their own private space and maybe to also stay with their pet until we can get them into a different intervention. So, that's kind of the very high level of the program and the program here specifically. And I'm here to answer any questions that the council might have.
Yes, Wendy?
Thanks. So, thank you very much for being here tonight. I really appreciate the update. Well, I know we all do. I wanted to ask a quick question, too, as far as, my understanding is, Sonoma County, we only have one family shelter. So, there's also the issue of having to split families up if you've got, you know, a husband and a wife and a female child. You may have to have them in one shelter, and then dad has to go somewhere else. So, is that, is that true? Is it still only just the one that takes entire families?
Yeah, so, there's only one shelter that takes the family as a whole, and that's actually Catholic Charity Shelter. It's our family support center. It's a 138-bed shelter in Santa Rosa. Although it's located in Santa Rosa, we serve the whole county. There are a couple of other smaller shelters, but you're absolutely right. They do split up families. For example, if it's a man, if it's a husband and wife, husband has to go to a different shelter, and wife has to go to that shelter with the kids. Additionally, some of the shelters have age requirements on the kids. One shelter has an age requirement where they don't take boys over the age of five. And so, it creates barriers for this population. Luckily, our shelter is set up as an old general hospital, so we have private exam rooms we've turned into actual rooms, so we can keep the families together in their own space in there. And so, while we've had, we have about 81 families on our waiting list to get into that shelter right now. And so, oftentimes, they're in our Safe Parking Program while they're waiting to get in.
Okay, great. Thank you for answering that. John?
Yeah, great. Thank you. It was Jenna?
Jenny.
Jenny.
Yeah.
Jenny, I have a couple of questions, just to try to clarify this in my head. We've all acknowledged that this is not a cure-all, our fantasy of homelessness. Totally understand that. But these people are homeless, at least at a temporary level. So, I'm just kind of curious how Catholic Charities sees providing these safe parking programs. In other words, I guess I'm trying to formulate my question a little bit better. Even if, like, say, just two or three individual vehicles are utilizing the site in Kattati or anywhere else in the county, there's several sites, if they didn't have those safe parking sites available, they're still homeless. They would be out somewhere, who knows where, in their vehicle. So, they're still in their vehicle, I get that. But how do you guys see this, this program? Because to me, my, my understanding is, there's one less thing to have to worry about. You don't have to be as vigilant and sleep as lightly if you're out and about somewhere else. I mean, how do you guys, how do you address that?
Oh, yeah. There's a couple of things I'll say to that. The first is, you're absolutely right. Having, having a place that you know you can be, that you're not going to get ushered along or moved along, or have to worry about the security of, you know, yourself or your family, or whoever might be in the vehicle with you, definitely takes a piece of the stress away. It doesn't take all the stress away, because you're still in homelessness, you're still kind of in that trauma and chaos, but it definitely helps. Additionally, one of the best things is the restroom we bring in. So, at our, our safe parking sites, we have a port-alet we bring in. And if you can imagine, if you didn't have that, you don't know we're going to go to the bathroom at any time, but you've got to go. If you've got to go, you know, you have to go somewhere. And so, this provides the dignity of the restroom, but also, it provides kind of that safety, knowing I have a place to use the restroom at night. The bigger part of our system of care that's super important for us is the path act, we can know where they're going to be on any given night, and we know how to engage them. One of the biggest difficulties we have with our street outreach team is knowing where to find the individual to follow up. And I can't tell you how many individuals we've actually been able to find housing just to go back and not be able to locate them. And so, then we have to move on to the next individual, and they may have lost their housing opportunity. So, it's a great place to know, hey, they're at Kattati tonight. I can go and give them an update on their case, or give them an update on this housing application, or whatever it might be. It's a great engagement and case management tool for us to know where they're going to be and keep working with them moving forward. So, there's the basic needs that get met, but more importantly, the case management piece that comes with it.
And I kind of had this question. I wasn't going to ask you, but you kind of opened the door. And if you don't have an answer, that's okay. But is there a sort of an average time of, once somebody applies to the Safe Parking Program, that they can actually find something available, some kind of housing, even if it's just temporary? Is there just a general time?
Yeah, I can say, I don't have the specific number, but I can say anecdotally, it hovers around three months that we're able to, you know, and sometimes less, sometimes longer, based on the individual's needs. Our biggest thing is making sure people have choice. So, you know, what might be a good choice for me as a service provider, maybe isn't a good choice for that individual and their family. And so, we try to empower them to find the intervention that's going to help their, them themselves. And so, it's, I would say anecdotally around three months, and that's pretty typical within our emergency shelter system, too.
That's great. Well, thank you for that, and thanks for working with us and the other jurisdictions out there as well.
Thank you.
John?
Well, I just wanted to commend you on the program. I think it's a great program, and I think Kattati is proud to partner with you guys and to do what a little bit we can do in light of the situation. And it's encouraging to hear that so many are able to get into a little bit better situation, and this allows them that opportunity to stay connected. So, thank you.
Well, thank you very much. I have two quick questions for you, Ms. Holmes. First, as you mentioned, our agreement on the MOU, we have Kattati requested a preference for participants in the following order: single mothers, families, and then all others. Not turning anyone away, but having a preference. I was curious if you have, could you give me any rough idea proportionately how that is bearing out? For example, you mentioned last night, there were five cars. Any rough idea of what we might see in terms of single mothers, families, and all others in, on an average basis?
Yeah, so, because we haven't been full yet, we aren't turning anyone away, but we, so, when we get to that point where we are full, which we are on our way to do that, it's typical of our sites, it takes a little bit of time for people to build trust in the, in the program site, especially for a place like Kattati, where there has really not been something like that before. So, but I will say, last night, we had three families and two single adults.
Okay.
So, those were, that made up the five cars.
Well, that's great. That's exactly, at least personally, that's exactly the results we hope to see. Hope to see that these families can actually have a safe haven to get some rest. The other thing I wanted to ask, so, out of those 10 potential slots we had last night, this was the highest number I've heard in a few numbers. I've heard 50% of usage. From what I've heard, that varies from 20% up to 50%. Who knows more? What I wanted to ask you, what is the average in most places in terms of usage? Do you start out slow, build up? Are they always filled at all times?
It definitely starts out slow. Some sites are more full than others. For example, we have our county site that's in front of the PR, the Permanent Resource Management Division. division. That hovers around 75%. It's kind of an operational logistical piece because sometimes people will come and then sometimes we won't see them for a night or two because they may be out somewhere else and they don't have the gas to get back and they're trying to ration their gas. And so we don't automatically exit somebody for missing one or two nights. It's once they miss a series of evenings that we then give that spot up and give it to somebody else. But there are a couple of sites where there is high utilization. One site is typically mostly full. It's because it's specifically designed for people who are, you know, has a disability, a physical disability and they need additional assistance. So that one typically stays a little bit more full, but usually hovers around 75%, but it's almost always it takes time for us to ramp up to that. And based on the numbers I looked at before this meeting, you guys are well on your way to that being the case here.
Well, I'm glad to hear that, particularly with the unfortunate start with CHP, but these things happen.
Yeah.
So I just want to close you open by thanking us for working to provide that spot. And I know for this community, that's a slightly larger number per capita of spaces than most other communities, but I actually just want to thank you and Catholic Charities very much for just the wonderful work you're doing. Frankly, I was really unaware of the depth of it and I'm very impressed. So thank you to everybody in the organization for what you do.
Thank you.
You touched on the finding people permanent housing or more stable housing, but you also touched on case management. You also provide, try and hook them together with other services, correct?
Absolutely. That's one of the first things we do with anybody we're working with, especially in the safe parking program. Our goal in this program isn't necessarily, you know, there's different levels of case management. So there's the level of trying to deal with the issue that may have brought you to homelessness in the first place. Our stance is that's best done in a home. And so in our emergency shelters and our safe parking program, what we're really doing is resource navigation and finding that home. And not necessarily doing behavioral change and things like that. That's really designed better for once they have the stable roof over their head. And makes sense, right? When you're living in your vehicle or you're living on the streets, you can't really remember to take your medication or go see a doctor. It's really once you've got that stability, we start doing that really intensive case management. So the case management I refer to is much more resource navigation and getting them into the home. Those are our kind of two primary objectives.
Well, I would like to echo what my colleague said. We really appreciate partnering with you. Thank you for giving us this report. I'm sure we will ask for another report again. I too am glad that we overcame whatever the starting hiccups were and look forward to hearing more from you. And in case there's any other questions, I might bring you back, but I'm going to open it up for public comment and then may ask you to answer questions if there are any with that. But thank you so much for all you do. Lori, would you like to come in?
This, I'll tell you the real story of what the situation is. We have been, I've been a homeless applicant for two months here through my social advocacy class at the JC. And first, you wouldn't put on the agenda, there was, to have a coalition for when there was a homeless setting summit coming up. You wouldn't add it to the agenda. This is ridiculous about the numbers. Maybe there was five last night. People have been sending in to a website for at least a month, some of George, but other people, that there has been none. And then there has been one RV and one white pickup. And that's all that's been there. You've got people showing up. It's an active parking ride, bus stop or Golden Gate Transit. They come at 5:00 in the morning, the commute buses start coming at 5:30 and 6:30 in the morning. So homeless are woken up. We all, every citizen was against it being put out there at St. Joseph Park at right. You all didn't listen. We wanted it here at the community center. We wanted them to have decent ones. You guys are the ones, don't pretend you're sitting here being so cooperative. You're not. You've done everything against the homeless. I have homeless friends and you, they, I mean, I get the truth. I don't get the spin, you guys like to spin everything so horribly, but you're just making a disservice. Even the county supervisors knows this is a failed program. I was in my class last Thursday with the county supervisor and they knew this was a failed program. That no, it was next because it was next to the freeway exit with no sound wall, with the Golden Gate Transit. They knew without me even saying the city. I approached, how do we deal with city councils with homeless issues? And she knew who I, she knew what this, you are the laughing stock of this county when it comes to homeless, just to let you know.
Thank you for your comments. George? Yes?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a noble project or program that has been plagued by this city council and its incompetence. The location that you've chosen for this is wrong, the wrong place. Lori Alderman is exactly right. It's extremely noisy. There's no sound wall there despite the fact that Mr. Lambman says there's a sound wall there. He has failed to acknowledge the fact that there is no sound wall there. So let's not pretend that there is. This whole idea about regaining trust after the program started, I don't understand that at all. We need a little more clarification about this. I don't think there's any trust issue out there. And if you wanted some good numbers on what's really going out there, why don't we have members of the police department here or the police chief giving you those numbers? The police officers are doing the drive-bys, they're doing the safety checks. Where are they tonight? I've driven by many times and I've taken pictures from afar, from some 50 yards away from these cars. I've emailed them to you because weeks ago, you asked for a report from the city staff. City staff just rolled their eyes. They didn't know what to do except call these representatives. I volunteered to go out there and get you a few photographs and give you a regular report. I've sent them to you. Have you ever given me a thank you? Have you acknowledged my work at all? No, because you don't care. You don't care about the homeless. And this whole idea behind privacy, that they deserve some privacy out there on a public parking lot from 50 yards away to take a photo for you, to give you a report back is absolutely asinine. And you've never addressed the fact that in December and January of each year, it is basically freezing out here in Catati. Freezing temperatures. And you're putting homeless inside their cars and family with children in their cars in freezing temperatures? I bring this up year after year and you guys are just silent about it. It's inhuman to leave people out there in those cars in those freezing temperatures. You haven't lifted a finger. You haven't spent a dime with your millions and millions of dollars of city budget. You haven't donated one dime. That is the wrong location for this project. I agree with Lori. The right location should have been right out here at City Hall, right where you have two lavatories and the old middle school next door, in close proximity to the police department where they could keep an eye on it, keep it safe. These people out there are targets, right off the freeway for any number of possible crimes and invasions. Under the bright light, they are targets. And I believe there are more homeless people in Catati in their vehicles, but they don't want to park out there. They're parked in our industrial parks, they're parked out near Myrtle and some of the other, Myrtle Park and places like that where they can get a good night's sleep, where they can get some quiet and some peace and tranquility. You people are just totally irresponsible on how you've handled this. I do want to give this representative thank you for trying to do a good job, but I apologize for the incompetency and the apathy of the city council.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else wishing to speak on this? Yes, Eric. I thought I saw your hand up. Yes? Okay.
I came in late, so it might be out of context, but Mr. Berish talks about using the area over here. It was used years ago for a skate park and apparently that was a little too complex for people to handle, so the skate park failed. So you need to do a little bit of study to make sure everyone's up and ready for this sort of thing before you suddenly say, go here, go there. There should be, you know, a reasonable place. My personal opinion is it's a little confusing that you'd spend $3 million to make this great gateway and then you have essentially a homeless shelter right there. I don't have the answer for the homeless. I think unfortunately, it might be a great place for an RV park or something else. If I was homeless, I would hope that I have an RV. But, you know, it's a little confusing. And the reason I bring that up is every time I go by, there seems to be the same vehicle there. So it would be somebody living there on an ongoing basis, not 10 people that happen to be down on their luck. And I was speaking to somebody today that was here years ago. It used to be kind of common practice for people that left The Grove, which is in sort of Myrtle Park, sort of Catati. They would then get into a bus and travel around and they found that they could live for a couple of years on a bus. This was in the 60s and 70s. So I'm a little confused. I think you need to really kind of have a plan for legitimate homeless in our community. And saying it should be here, saying it should be there is easy to do, but I think you need to really have a little bit more than, oh, it's here because there's a parking lot next to a church. I think there should be a little bit more involved there. I think it's great that you have a water fountain and $3 million of presentation to do a northern gateway that took 20 something years, but I don't really think that all the pieces are fitting together. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Could I ask the Catholic, Jenny, could you come back up? Is there any other public comment before I bring Jenny back? Okay. Okay, you can have questions also. So, all right, you would like to ask a question? You may go first.
Your eyes are on me. Okay, great.
Well, you.
So this question, this statement has come up before and I wrote it down with quotes around it tonight verbatim, putting homeless inside their cars during freezing temperature times. So where, if we didn't have this program, where are these people at nighttime?
So most of the people that we're working with are people who are living in their vehicles when they would be leaving their vehicles whether we had a safe parking program or not. Safe parking was a program intervention in reaction to the fact that our point-in-time count showed there were about 800 people in the county who live in their vehicles. The biggest reason why right now is, again, what I mentioned earlier, the impacted shelter system. The two largest shelters, the Sam Jones Hall, which serves the whole county, has 174 people waiting to get in. And our family shelter has 81 families getting in, multiply by three, that's a lot of people. So it's our impacted shelter system as a county that has really made it difficult to get people into shelter as quickly. And so that is where they would be sleeping, whether there was the program there or not. I will say that we do open up additional cold weather programs during the winter time, but those are based in Santa Rosa and not everyone is able to make it to Santa Rosa to get there.
Right. And of course, the ideal would be if we provided something more than a parking space. I totally get that and I agree with that. Is there any way Catholic charities could talk to the folks here in the city about what are the conditions like for you at night? Is it too noisy? You know, is it, it'd be nice to hear from the people who are actually spending the night there, just to kind of get some feedback from the actual people spending the night there. I think that would be a curiosity because, you know, it could very well be incredibly noisy because of the freeway. And then this is not a question for you, but maybe if we could get Ms. Alderman to give us an answer. I'm curious who the supervisor was that made the statement.
I'll give you your own information.
Okay, well, I can ask all of them. That's fine. Great. No, please, thank you. Thank you. So that was, those were my just kind of follow-up questions that I had.
Wendy, did you have questions?
Oh, sure. And so I was just going to clarify, actually, so it's not really a question. But one of the reasons we really appreciate you coming here and giving us this update is because we really wanted kind of the global big picture overview. We really never, from my understanding, were interested in getting a head count. I mean, obviously, we want the spaces available for the folks who need them. And if it's 100% full, that's great. If there's three people there, that's fine too, as long as those are the only three people that needed it. It's kind of a weird situation because normally you want 100% capacity to show, hey, we're doing great, but really, we're not wishing people were homeless and living in their cars. We just want to be able to provide the services for them if they need it. So appreciate you being here and giving us the big picture. So thank you.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, I'm going to segue perfectly from my friend Councilmember DeLasso because I actually do know who the supervisor is because somebody in the community actually made me aware of some allegations that were put on a Facebook page that Ms. Alderman and Mr. Berish use. I took a look at them, I copied them, and I sent them to Shirley Zane in her office and asked them to comment on them. There's quite a few comments on here. I should point out that the webpage actually lists this as Ms. Alderman speaking and then quoting Shirley Zane in replies, although you've misspelled her first name. This is the reply from Shirley Zane. This is the reply from Shirley Zane when I asked if this was correct. Mark, of course, this is not correct. I never even mentioned Ms. G. because I didn't even know what it was until Michelle, her assistant Michelle, reminded me this morning. I spoke to this class about a number of topics, including housing and homeless services. Ms. Alderman completely misrepresented my comments and has an axe to grind with the city of Catati. That's public comment on that. So I hope that sets that record straight. Now.
Excuse me.
If I could continue without being interrupted here.
Excuse me.
No, I'm setting the record straight.
I'm stepping down. That is what she did say. I have a class from a people.
Well, that's good, but that's what supervisor Zane said to me today in writing. And I'll forward that to you if you'd like.
Excuse me. All right. We're going to have a little, we're going to.
He has American issues.
If we can be quiet, we can continue other, all right, we're going to take a recess right now.
I wonder if I could finish my comments when we come back, Madam Mayor.
Well, we come back after you.
Thank you.
He always gets two. He always gets, this is so horrible. He is horrible.
Everyone, Jenny, would you like to come back up? I believe that Mark has more questions.
Okay, just to finish my comments, firstly, first of all, on the issue of the sound wall, I will admit, I was incorrect, there's not a sound wall over there. And I think I was thinking of the area directly on the other side of the freeway where there were some homeless trying to camp back there. Unfortunately, thanks to some signs and cameras that somebody in the neighborhood put up, they were driven out. But at any rate, I did want to be fair and say that. What I am concerned about though is we have a gentleman in the community going there late at night, 2:00 in the morning, taking pictures of people. That concerns me. And I wonder if we could perhaps just give some fair notifications to the people who are using this, single mothers, families who might be alarmed to wake up and see somebody photographing the outside of their car at 2:00 in the morning. Because understandably, with the best of intentions, that's kind of, might be perceived as somewhat predatory or certainly a very bizarre behavior. Now, frankly creepy is the word I was thinking, Mr. Berish, since you're the person I'm talking about.
How dare you.
Oh, I do.
How dare you.
It's real easy. I just said it.
How dare you.
Let me keep going. So what I'd like to say is that although unfortunately, with law such as it is, there's nothing we can do to protect these people, it just seems to me that it's common decency that anybody else would know not to use them as part of your political agenda to fight and go disturb single mothers and families by taking pictures of where they're trying to sleep in the middle of the night. My personal opinion, but I did want to share that. So if you could get that message back to the people who are using our community, I want them to feel welcome and comfortable and certainly not predated upon.
How dare you.
Mr. Moore, would you, do you have questions for Jenny?
I don't, Jenny. I think, sorry for the disturbance. We are subject to this quite a bit, but it's too bad that you have to be subject to it. Again, I think you guys do a terrific job. I did not hear in the several months that we were looking at this program, any citizen complaint at all regarding the location. So I think right now, basically what we have is what's available, who are we using that. It doesn't mean we'll be using it long-term because who knows what will happen at that gateway. That may be developed down the road. But when that, if that opportunity comes, we'll cross that bridge when we get there. So I think it's great what you're doing and keep it up.
Thank you.
I do have a couple of questions. So we did look at about 10 or 12 different places and we ultimately chose this as a pilot. It's just a pilot. And one of the situations that keeps coming up is the community center. And I believe that, my recollection is that the reason that this wasn't chosen is because you needed a place where people could consistently, seven days a week, all the time, be able to use a spot. And because our community center is used for events, and in particular, the Gattati Room, that that was not going to be a viable option for you guys because we would have to tell people that they couldn't park when we had an event. Is that correct?
Yeah, there definitely are. That's something we definitely want to take into consideration at our different locations is can we keep consistency of when people can show up and when they leave. When there's a lot of disturbances during the, you know, the night, it makes it hard to remember which night is which and which night, do I come up at 10 or do I show up at 7:00? So the consistency is very helpful, again, for the kind of stressful situation that they're in. But I will say echo that this is a pilot and we're going to, you know, in all of the spots, all of the sites we create are pilots. So we test out the site, see how it's working. And in many cases, we have either changed the site or changed the little pieces of where the actual cars are. So there's adaptability and flexibility built into this program. I mean, really, it's parking spots and a port-a-lit and a place where they can consistently show up and know when they can be there and when they can't. So those are the bare requirements. And, you know, we'll be doing a survey as a follow-up to this and a couple of councilmembers' ideas and talking with the residents and get their perspective. And we'll funnel it up through your city manager and continue the evaluation of the pilot area.
Yeah, because, you know, it's been mentioned that it may be too noisy because of the Golden Gate Transit bus starting. That would be good information to have feedback from the people that are using it. Does it disturb them or doesn't? Are they okay with that? I don't believe that people are going and knocking on their doors, but, you know, it could be that the headlights coming in could bother them. That would be good, useful information. The police do swing by and do safety checks, but they're just checking to make sure that everything is okay. As part of the program, it's Catholic charities that is checking nightly on the folks to make sure that the program is going okay and that people are there that are supposed to be there and people that aren't supposed to be there. Is that a correct understanding?
Absolutely. So we come in and we check several times throughout the night. We have staff all throughout the night. And we do it randomly so that people don't, you know, find out and predict when it might be coming or not. We have had a couple of situations we've had to go and, you know, people who weren't supposed to be there or people who were maybe outside interference with the program that our staff has it to come because the number one thing we're doing during those checks throughout the night is safety for the people who are staying there. So it is sometimes, we try to keep our sites very, very private. So the other 10 sites I mentioned, only two are public because we had to go through public process to approve them. One was the county site and one is this site. And so because it is public, it does create sometimes that difficulty, but that's what our staff's there to do. And we also have a response number that our staff is holding on them throughout the night that the residents or the people in the program can actually call if something's going on or something doesn't seem right. And we've turned a little van into a mobile office. So they're driving all around the county all night long, checking in on the different sites we have.
So you don't have an expectation that the local police departments are responsible for checking on the residents that you're putting there, correct?
It isn't a requirement, but it is something that we make sure that all, that the police know which sites they are. So they are the one entity, even in the private settings that we don't try to publicize, the police do know where they are just so that they don't think, you know, like kind of an incident that happened with CHP, they don't think this person's not supposed to be here and move them along. We want to make sure that they are aware of that.
Okay. And unrelated, related but unrelated, you spoke about cold weather shelters and a couple of people have said that, you know, we're not doing enough, we should do more. Does Catholic charities also run some of that? And is it a program in and of itself?
Yeah, so we have everything from cold weather programs, like a winter shelter where people can come in, just get off the streets, get out of the weather, get out of the rain. It's been extremely packed this last winter. We, I haven't experienced in my time being a homeless service provider this kind of raining cold, and so we've been heavily impacted. We also opened up warming stations where we find sites across the county, similar to our safe parking program, where we can do pop-up heaters and pop-up tents for people to come and, you know, kind of those patio heaters you see out at restaurants. We put those out for people to be, and we put cots underneath them for people to sleep underneath. So we, that's kind of the warming stations we do across the county. We only have two sites right now. The other program, if the council is interested in maybe looking at doing some things, is a program called Rapid Rehousing. And that's been the most successful way we've been able to actually get people out of homelessness, especially with safe parking. A rapid rehousing program, what it does is it helps, we find housing for individuals and then we subsidize their rent for a period of time. And while the rent is being subsidized, we case manage them in the home. And that's when we deal with maybe, you need, you know, we need to help you find a job, we need to help you get job ready, or we need to, you know, get you on SSI or whatever the, you know, thing might be that was holding them back, we work with it in the home. And that has been a nationally, nationally a best practice, evidence-based, and locally, it's showing great results in the upwards of 96% of people retaining housing on their own for a year after the program ends. So it's a great investment and it doesn't necessarily need more infrastructure. We find existing housing stock and that's how we subsidize the rent.
So have you worked with any other cities about cold weather sheltering at all?
Primarily the City of Santa Rosa. We also have partnered with the City of Sonoma. So there's a local service provider out there who has a small property. And while we didn't oversee the shelter, we gave them all the infrastructure. We gave them the patio heaters, the tents, the cots to help them set up their own cold weather program. And then they have local kind of oversight of the project. And then we have our, ours here in, ours in Santa Rosa that we operate at one of our locations.
So is that a possibility in the future that Catholic charities might be interested in kind of a similar program?
Absolutely. I'd be happy. Anything we can do to help the homeless in our community, we're happy to be a part of that conversation.
Yeah, I understand that, you know, everything, every little bit helps. It's baby steps and, you know, what we're doing is, you know, is small, but, but maybe there are other things that, you know, ultimately we can, we can look into helping with the situation because it is, in particular, in this county, it's, it's a really big, it's a really big problem. I really appreciate you coming and appreciate you sticking around and answering our questions and look forward to working with you guys in the future and hearing more back from you.
Happy to come anytime. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Okay, with that, we will move on to formation of the website update and ad hoc committee.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So just a brief report on this. We are still targeting the end of this current fiscal year to be live or close to live with a new website with the intended purpose to make it more user-friendly across different platforms that are commonly in use today and also make the information on the website more accessible. And to complete this, the recommendation here is that the city council designate two members to serve an ad hoc committee. And I would expect that, that ad hoc committee would meet probably every other week for an hour or two, just to go over where things are with the website and provide input, suggestions and so forth. And they would, at any major milestones, it would also be brought to the full council for input as well. So I want to make sure that's clear, that the ad hoc wouldn't be running with it entirely and still would be checked in with the council. That I'd be happy to. Yeah, it'd be roughly to the end of the fiscal year. It might go a month or two beyond that, but that's, that's the current schedule.
Questions?
No, no questions.
No? I will open it up for public comment. Any, yes, George?
Yeah, council, I don't think you need any ad hoc committee here. There's hardly anything on your agendas right now. We haven't seen such stark and empty agendas in many, many years. It's not like these meetings are going on till 9:00, 10:00, 11:00 o'clock at night. There's no reason why the reports from this company can't be here in front of full council review where you can all ask your questions and the public can ask questions about the progress of the website as well. Why you're going to an ad hoc committee is baffling. Unless you're trying to keep this out of the public view or the company that you contracted with is dragging their feet and haven't been giving you the regular reports that you expected for the, for the ungodly amount of money that you're paying this company, you just need to bring them back here every couple of months and give you a report in full view of how they're, they are progressing with the city's new website. Forget the ad hoc committee.
Thank you for your comments. Lori, did you, no? All right. No. Okay, then I will close public comment on that. Yes?
I'd be delighted to be on the ad hoc committee. And I think, as the city manager pointed out, any significant milestones, we would bring back to, sorry, to a full council meeting and get any kind of public input at that point in time. But I'd be more than happy to take more of my time, personal time, and do this.
We have one volunteer.
I was also going to say I could do it as well, just because I have a little bit more time availability at the moment. So unless there's anybody else really, really wanting to check the baby steps of the website.
No, I'm just curious what you guys have for IT backgrounds.
A 15-year-old. I think it's basic usability, right? I don't think you have to necessarily have an IT background.
Right, yes. It's.
Identify.
Yeah, just the look and usability, yeah.
So from this side of the table, do we have any desiring?
No, I think that would be fine.
Okay, with that, I'm sorry to designate. All right, with that, I will designate Councilmember DeLasso and Councilmember Skillman to serve on the website ad hoc committee. Do we want to vote on that?
I think because it's an appointment, albeit a designation, if we have a vote.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so.
So moved?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, 5-0.
Not yet.
Now we get to hear from Smokey Robinson.
There you go. So we will move on to the city manager's report.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So just some construction updates. The Sunflower Tennis Court fence is under repair this week. So that's good news. And also the resurfacing of the tennis court is out to bid currently. And so that you'll see that in the, in the near future. And then I know Public Works is also going to be working concurrently or shortly after that on the restroom out there as well to reopen that. So it'll be fully functional again. And then the plants, the planning along Myrtle Avenue are expected to start next week. So start seeing some things on the ground next week there, which would be good. And then the monument sign at the gateway of 116 Old Red, they were installed today and we expect them to be energized by Thursday as, I think you remember, they have internal illumination for the Gattati. So by Thursday, hopefully that'll be operational. And on the gateway project, there's still the road surface repairs, seat walls, street furniture and final striping that has to be done. So there's still some other things that are, that we're waiting on some consistently warmer weather for. And then strategic planning will start soon. The staff level, we started kind of talking about and will be talking about later this week, pulling some of the materials together for the first council strategic planning meeting, which will be on April 4th, followed by a potential meeting on the 18th. So that's, it's like Groundhog Day. It comes again every year. And then just some recreation news. Camp Gattati Spring Break, we have, we're, we have a couple spaces still left. So if anyone is interested in attending that spring break camp, let them know. And next Friday begins our spring sports clinic with lacrosse and multi-sport, which takes place near Kater Field here. And we've also added new summer camps, including a Moana-themed gymnastics camp and three theater camps. And you can read more about them when they come out in our activity guide, which is also, we're getting the final proof from the publisher. So that should be out in the next several weeks as well. And then the free Lego Build Day will be on April 15th in the Gattati Room from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. This is the build of Gattati out of Legos, which I'm personally pretty excited about.
Yeah.
And then, and we also received a rock wall sponsorship from Sonoma Clean Power for Kids' Day. So it's a good, that's a great sponsorship from them, a recurring sponsorship from them. And that, as you know, is July 8th in La Plaza Park. And we're also currently seeking a photo booth sponsor and looking for vendors to participate in Kids' Day as well. So we're working on that right now. And for any information on this or any of our rec programs, you can email Ashley@awilson@gattatisity.org or you can call at 665-422-22. 4222.
Too many twos.
Yeah, three twos, one four, three twos. Thank you. I'd say I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions?
What was our theme this year for the Kids' Day? Do you remember?
There was a catchy, catchy theme for it, but it was celebrating.
History, right?
25 years.
Yeah, it was the 25th, yeah.
Culture.
Yeah, but it's a world culture, celebrating world cultures, basically.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Do you have a question?
I do have a question on the restrooms at Sunflower. Will they be on a timer like some of the other ones are?
Yeah, the door locks will have to be on timers.
Okay. With that, we can move on to council member reports. Start this way, I guess. Councilmember Moore?
I do not have anything to report. We do have a REMF report meeting coming up on the 27th, I believe, March 27th up in Yokaiya.
I have nothing to report either, Madam Mayor. We have a legislative committee coming up this Friday, however, and I expect it's going to be a rich full season there.
Yes. Councilmember DeLasso?
Yeah, so a couple of meetings that I've gone to on Thursday, the 2nd of March, and Saturday, the 11th, both on the topic of cannabis, which I thought was really bizarre that the only two meetings I've had in the last two weeks had to deal with cannabis here in the city. So the first one with that panel that was up here, I thought was really good. It had a diversity of people from Brandon from Mercy Wellness, the chief, we had the fire district represented. There was an attorney from Myers-Nave. There was a business owner, a landowner and a couple of other folks. And I thought it was a really good mix of people. I'm not sure everybody was exactly on the same page up here, and that's fine. But it was really, I thought it was really interesting to hear the different opinions. And a lot of it was related to the county tax, which just passed. And it's interesting, there was a gentleman in the far back who was from a dispensary in Vallejo. And he got up and spoke relatively passionate about the issue as well. And I kind of kept hearing this recurring theme that if that tax is too high, the growers will stay in the shadows and they won't come and get permits and they won't be legitimate. And then, of course, you know, the tax passes with this upper end limit, which is a little frightening. And so I just, you know, I don't know where this is going to go. But when Brandon was in here earlier, I just talked to him just a little bit more about the detail. And of course, he said that, you know, again, if it's going to be too high of a tax, then it's going to be interesting to see where his suppliers, if that's the right word, that sounds like a legal word that I shouldn't use. But anyway, the people that he buys some stuff from, we'll just leave it at that. And then Saturday with the open house that the city provided, I know, I kind of, I think I just walked into a trap on that one. But Saturday, the, the open house, you know, that was great that the staff put that on. It wasn't hugely attended. The previous meeting, I think I counted over 30 people that were in the room for two hours. So it was great that you guys did put that open house together on Saturday. I know a few people did filter in and, and they had concerns, rightly so. And I mean, I think, I think there's still a lot of concerns out there regarding recreational weather. recreational versus medical, and there's real distinctions there. So that's all I had.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I went to the ribbon cutting on March 1st over at Flagship Taproom. So that was, that was fun, even though I didn't win anything. And then also went to a training on our AB 1234 that was hosted by Ms. Donahue very well. So anyway, those are the two main things. And that's it.
Okay, well, I was, been a little bit busy. So I too went to the Flagship Taproom ribbon cutting. It was very well-attended. There was a lot of people there, and I wish them a lot of luck. I too went to both the cannabis panel discussion, which I thought was a really good discussion, and it was like nice to hear all the different perspectives people had. And I had to laugh with the business owner that was there, and afterwards, he had a lot of people, you know, trying to connect up with him. So I think he has some deals that he's got in the works there. Anyways, that's.
I have no choice of words.
Whatever, yeah, sorry.
Networking.
Yeah, networking, that's it, yeah. Business prospects. I went to the health action meeting on March 3rd. That was an interesting meeting, because they're looking at what their focus should be on in the next three to five years. So it was a different format. Usually, they're presenting things to us on different subjects. And this meeting, they broke people up and asked each of the different groups questions. So as they develop their planning for the next three, three to five years, they got quite a lot of input. And, and the interesting thing, and how timely, based upon our discussions tonight, the biggest emergency emerging thing has to do with homelessness. That really is, you know, the biggest thing in that county. So even though we have, you know, the different aspects of, of health action and wanting to move those things forward, this really kind of wasn't in any of their planning things. Although, you know, making sure that people are healthy, also, you know, you have to have a roof over your head. So that will be interesting to see what they, what they do with that. But, but it came out of a lot of the groups. We were broken up in probably, I want to say about eight different groups. And they broke us up in two different ways. One, the first time they broke us up by what it is you did. So city councils were together, and hospitals were together, and healthcare, you know, so they like, and then they flipped it around, and they kind of just broke people up in, in three. So they got a lot of really good feedback. So that was a different meeting, and it was very useful. And more to come on that. They're going to come back based upon all that feedback. I also attended the Miss Sonoma County Pageant, and that was really very exciting. And there was, there's a lot of talented people in our community. Some of the things that folks did were very interesting. I also attended the Warner Park Catati Health Action Chapter. I'm sure that we'll hearing a little bit more about this. I know that Ashley has been working with some of the groups on food access, so the possibility of looking at food gardens and things like that. So they are reforming, the food group is reforming. So the person that was doing it is kind of having to step aside. So we were introduced to the new lead for that. They are also looking to fill out an Affordable Care Act survey for Congressman Mike Thompson's office. And they were talking about the outreach that's being done, and I guess that there is just an incredible amount of folks now that are looking to citizens' class, classes. And they have had a total of sixteen classes, and they're always, they're, they're just full. And so there's a lot of, a lot of folks interested in, in doing that, and that's being done as part of the Warner Park Health Center outreach and enrollment. So that's that. I too attended the AB 1234 training. Thank you very much, Robin, for that. And the North Bay Executive Call. The only thing that I want to point out on that is, as Vice Mayor pointed out, there's a lot of bills that are going through that we're going to have to keep our eyes on. And, and interestingly enough, guess what? There's a theme here. A lot of them have to do with housing. So we will see probably a lot of action on housing bills coming around. And then the quarterly meeting for the North Bay Division will be on May 4th, and it will actually be done at the Buck Institute in, in Nevada. So that ought to be really interesting. They're going to talk to us about what they do there and stuff. So, and they are going to have a speaker about homeless issues too. So that will be interesting. And I think that's about it for me. So I've been a little busy. Tomorrow's Waste Management Agency, so there you go. So with that, we, if anybody has any questions? No? No? Okay. Then we will move on, public comment on non-action agenda items. Yes, Lori?
I'd like to point out that this city has done so much damage to my family's life in the last two and a half years. I don't deserve cruel treatment like I have been getting. That was a very low blow. Mark Blaman is after power, and he'll do anything cruel or not. My family, when the tree, the, the storms went down, the, his, I'm sorry, he's, I'm sitting there, my family, six weeks ago, my mom's friend is dying, I'm sick, my mom is having a medical emergency, his trees fell on our, our fence. He's sitting up here saying how he needs to have permits, and how neighbors need to do everything. And then he doesn't, he cut down five, five trees with no permits. We get, and a criminal, basically, cut down the trees, ten-foot branches onto our fence that were already damaged from the, so this is where this is coming from. This is not about what happened in class. That surely ain't, I have a whole room full of people who can say what happened. It's you guys need to not go after me for telling the truth, or exposing what you're doing. This is enough. How much damage are you guys going to do? I've done nothing but tell the truth. And I get damaged, more damaged and more damaged. All I have to do is say is Exhibit A next door, you know, seventeen months of not one building code, one safety guard. I've been harassed by the police. I've been everything. I've been Facebook, it's nice to know you're looking at our, at every, every social media, because you controlled every other one. The Facebook page, Independent Catati, was taken over by Joan Simon, and I was, I was slandered and demeaned for months for, for, for two, without able to do it. What else are you guys going to take over? How much more are you going to damage my life? I just want to know. Thank you.
Thank you. George?
Regarding future agenda items, I would like to hear more about Sunflower Park, because many citizens in town, for some fifteen years, have asked for that restroom at Sunflower Park be reopened. And it, it kind of begs the question, I mean, we really want a, maybe a more thorough discussion about things like opening up a park that needs, you know, some cleaning once in a while, and toilet paper, and soap, and so forth, how it remains closed for some fifteen years. I mean, if you, if you can't, if you can't reopen a bathroom for the children and the residents in that particular area near the railroad tracks over there, how are you going to build a new city hall? How are you going to expand a corporate yard? How are you, I mean, how, I mean, it really kind of begs the question. I, I appreciate the fact that we're getting there with the bathroom for those citizens out there, but I mean, really? Bathroom? And Mr. Deloso's comment about, you know, sometimes the council's not on the same page. I'd like to see some discussion on a future agenda about the fact that government's not supposed to be on the same page. That's the Soviet model. And if you've been to a League of California Cities seminar or orientation, they will be the first to tell you that the best government comes from a, a council that has diversity of opinions, from both sides of the aisle. And this whole notion that you all got to be on the same page, holding hands, on this radical leftist agenda that you're setting for yourself, it's not good. It's not good for our town. I know this bores you, Mr. Moore, but, you know, try to stay with us here, with the comments.
It's really you.
Excuse me, I got the, I got the floor. Excuse me, you're out of order. Please be quiet. I demand I be heard. Please be quiet.
I'm bored.
Yeah, just be quiet. You're out of order. You're violating the Brown Act.
Too bad.
Okay. Maybe you should remove yourself, Mr. Moore. Why don't you just remove yourself? If you can't let me speak my mind, why don't you just recuse yourself right now? If your passion, if your communist aggression is so, is so wild right now that you cannot listen to some common sense, maybe just remove yourself, okay? Can you do that, sir?
Time's up.
Just leave it, yeah. Now, regarding the drive-bys, I know you've been doing some drive-bys at the homeless designated parking area. I know you have. You've gone maybe by during the morning, sir, on your drive to work. Maybe you guys have come by after dinner and drove, drove by. Why don't you add your input into the discussion? The reason you're not is because you know it's been a failure. And, and if, you know, if, if the police can drive through that area with the, with the, the video cameras rolling, and that's not creepy, how is it so that a neighborhood watch captain can't go in there and take a picture for your benefit from fifty to a hundred yards away? Now, if it was so objectionable, when I emailed you a photograph of two vehicles there from fifty to a hundred yards away, why did not you return my email and say, George, Mr. Beric, I don't appreciate those photographs from that far away. I think that's an invasion of their privacy on a public parking lot. Please take me off your email list. But no, what you'd rather do is try to play partisan politics here, and try to bring up these charges of people being creepy. It's absolutely disgusting. We know that you've been by that area. We know that you're that responsible, that you, you take interest in these projects. But you didn't want to add your observation to the mix here tonight. And I find it very disturbing.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak on this item? Seeing none, I will close public comment on that. And any information received after the agenda was posted? Seeing none. Then I will call for adjournment at 8:32. Thank you very much, everyone.